Tony.
Aye. Just a, just a, what I believe is a correction, Madam Secretary. Brandon, you weren't recusing on the entire consent calendar, just 50.3, correct?
Correct. And then yes, that's everything else.
Great, thank you. Okay, the consent calendar passes. That takes us to item 701 with like 16 people presenting it, it looks like, from the staff report. Just kidding. Item 701 is approval of Rosenberg's Rules of Order and Voting Procedures: A Discussion Regarding Public Comment Procedures and Agenda Setting. The staff report in our agenda packet represents what I'm, what I'm sure is many, many hours of work on many people's part to hopefully get us to being a more effective and efficient policymaking body. And so I will use the chair's privilege just to say thank you very much to those of you who have brought this item before us, and I will hand it off to whomever is presenting first.
Thank you, Mr. Duran. As a consultant to review state bar practices, and as part of this role, I was asked to look at parliamentary procedures and see if we could, if I could recommend something that was simpler, easier to use, et cetera. We had a discussion about Rosenberg's at our, at the May meeting, and so the item before you today is, is for the approval of Rosenberg's. Just a note for any of the items, should you choose to move forward with them, they will be brought back to you as amendments to your Board of Trustees' policy manual. But Chair Duran, would you like to take these one by one?
Yes, please.
All right, so the first item before you then is, would be with regard to adopting Rosenberg's Rules of Order and replacing Robert's Rules of Order.
Okay, so we did have a discussion that, on that very important topic at a previous meeting. Does any member of the board have questions or additional comments or concerns on that very significant move? And I will just say, I've got Robert's Rules of Order here, which are an inch and a half thick, whereas Rosenberg's, Rosenberg's Rules of Order are, I don't know, six pages long? Something like that. I think that's progress. Any questions or comments? Any, any commentary from, Mr. Tony, please?
I'll just say that I'm one of those people that learned Robert's Rules in junior high school and have used it extensively. The Rosenberg rules are far superior, and I really support them because they're more accessible to everybody who's participating. The problem with Robert's Rules is that it gives an unfair advantage to people like me, who really know it really well. That's actually not the best way to run a public body. It should be a level playing field for all the members. And I, I very much, and in support of Rosenberg's, and you know, if we can, you know, you know, take that up whenever it's appropriate, I'll be, I'll be happy to make that motion. And then, of course, I'm happy to have the further discussion about, you know, you know, some of the issues that have to do with, you know, abstaining, what does that mean, and what constitutes the, you know, will of the body. But in terms of the basics of the Rosenberg's rules, it has my very strong support.
Thank you, Trustee Tony. I will only second your observation that for a public agency, Rosenberg's Rules really, really is more in the spirit of openness and transparency and effectiveness and, and bringing many diverse opinions and experiences to a table to develop policy. And I will also say, I'm not sure if, if it's the League of California Cities, or now called CalCities, who originally brought Robert's Rule, I mean Rosenberg's Rules to the fore, I think it is. But thank you to the, to those people and to the Institute for Local Government, on whose board I sit, for, for really trying to make local government in California much more accessible, and much more open, much more transparent and responsive. So I think this is a good, a good move, even though I don't get a vote.
Mr. Chair, if I may, so I had the pleasure of sitting through a couple of meetings with Ms. Boomer and Mr. Tony, and by their own admission, they were geeking out over these rules, and it was, it was quite the sight to behold. And with that said, I'm definitely happy to leave Robert's Rules in the rearview mirror, save some paper in the process, a couple of trees, for our organization, and happy to move the item, I think it's item A.
Vice Chair Stallings, if I could just indulge you, or ask you to indulge me, Trustee Tony asked to make the motion. I'm very happy to let you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. My, my only comment is that once we adopt the Rosenberg rule, the chair is able to vote, so that's a little difference. So I will, I am happy, I'm pleased to move that the State Bar Board of Trustees adopts Rosenberg's Rules for our decision-making process.
Just a point of, a point of information, that's effective immediately?
Effective immediately?
No, it would not be, excuse me, it would not be effective immediately because your Board of Trustees' policy manual has to be amended. Right now, your policy manual, which is your guiding document, still includes Robert's Rules of Order. So the next step in this would be to amend your policy manual, and that is what will make it a permanent and effective parliamentary procedure.
Thank you, Ms. Boomer.
And I defer to the subject matter expert on this. It's, it's been a joy working with Roberta.
Wonderful. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Boomer, for your work and for, well, I won't even go there. Motion by Tony, seconded by Stallings, may we have the roll, please?
Bratton, Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Dela Cruz? Dillan?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Selig?
Yes.
Shelby?
Aye.
Sol?
I'm back. Yes, aye.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Aye.
We have 10 ayes, two absent, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Thank you, folks. Let's move on to the next piece. Ms. Boomer, please. You might be on mute, we can't hear anything.
Roberta?
Sorry.
I think we're ready to talk about voting and abstentions.
Thank you, sir. I got booted out of the meeting for, for a quick minute. All right, so the other item that we, two other items that we discussed at the last meeting had to do with voting procedures and abstentions. And it would be advised to discuss abstentions first.
Roberta, you're, you're, I think your internet is not good right now. We're having a hard time. Maybe you can turn off your video.
All right, let me try that. All right, so, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So, so Trustee Cisneros, I would, I guess, turn it to you to, to discuss your concern with regard to abstentions. Right now, your Board of Trustees' policy manual does allow for abstentions, and so discussion with regard to whether it should or should not is, is before the body.
Thank you, Roberta. I will also just, at this point, mention that Roberta and I have worked together for over 20 years, and I'm glad that she's had a chance to help this fine body, because I have the highest degree of respect for her. Glad to talk to you, Roberta. Yes, thank you for introducing this topic. I think with regard to abstentions, obviously abstentions have always been one way of voting, but the, my concern is how abstentions are counted. And I think it's, it's a little bit more complicated than it, than simply stated like that. It depends on how, what the threshold is for approving a motion. I think up until now, the abstention, and I apologize, I don't know what Rosenberg's Rule says, I hope it still says that it's a majority of those present and voting. If we could maybe get that clarification, that would be great. If in that case, an abstention would, I would imagine under, also under Rosenberg's, would not be considered voting, it would be same as a recusal. And the only vote, voting votes that would be calculated for the passage or non-passage of an item would be the number of yes votes compared to the number of no votes of those voting in either of those choices. My concern is that if we moved away from that method of counting, and/or if abstentions were somehow considered a soft no, that I would be concerned about that, but I don't know if that's, if that, if either of those proposals are on the table right now. That's my position.
So I'd like Louisa or Roberta to clarify. I don't believe Rosenberg's itself outlines the rules for passing a motion. I think that's why we're having a separate conversation about it. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Right. So I think maybe, Jose, it wasn't correct, we shouldn't have taken abstentions first, if your thought is dependent on the decision on how many votes it takes to pass a motion.
Well, let me say in general, I see the potential of a, and I think that Trustee Cisneros is right, it, these things are actually related here. And I could see a situation where we consider a, a, a situation where we say, you know, you know, you know, my position has been that, you know, the, the question of will of a body, of a, you know, decision-making body, should be defined by the, the majority of that body agreeing, to be in agreement. We had a situation at an earlier meeting where, out of the 13-member body, there were three, three aye votes, five abstentions, and one no, and according to Robert's Rules, that motion passed. And I'd like to suggest that the will of the body was not represented by the three yes votes. So it, it makes sense. I, I, I see Trustee Cisneros's point of like, maybe if the people who wanted to abstain, maybe it meant they weren't ready to vote. And if they weren't ready to take a position, maybe it meant we weren't ready as a body to make a decision on that, that we needed more time, maybe another meeting, okay, to make that decision. Because I think the will of the body is an important concept when it comes to good governance. And so I could see something where we look at a package that says that the, that a, adopting a new, you know, adopting a resolution takes the majority of the body, that the math is easy, that's seven with this body, okay, and that there are no abstentions, that those link. The only thing I would like as a caveat is a clear definition of recusal and the times. So for instance, I noticed that Trustee Noel, in his meeting today, did a practice that I've been taught, which is that if you were not present at a meeting, that you should abstain from approving the minutes. You were not present. I mean, I, I noticed that, and I hope that was why you were doing it too, but that's what I do. That's my practice, okay?
Exactly.
And maybe what we do in that case is say that is acceptable for recusal. That's an, you weren't at the meeting, okay? It's hard to, you know, it's hard to vote, you know, do you vote yes, or do you vote no, you weren't there. So that, that's the kind of thing that I would like clarity on. And I think that if we had that kind of clarity, then I would be, and if we were to couple it with the will of the, you know, you know, the will of the body being defined as the majority, I would then be very much in support of no abstention for, you know, which is different from recusal. So, so I'm just saying that, that's what I've been thinking.
Trustee Cisneros.
Sure, thank you. I want to support Mark, much, much of what you've said just now, with a couple of thoughts to add, though. I think it's important to make sure that the will of the, this body, the Board of Trustees, is allowed to be expressed and allowed to be heard. I think I heard a couple of things in what you were saying. You characterized the abstentions as one way of, of, first, early in your comments, one way of saying, perhaps I'm not ready to make a decision. In my, in my experience, in that situation, any, and I've seen this happen many times, any and more than one board member could easily say, I would propose that we postpone the vote, that we extend the vote, that we have more conversation, that we be allowed to spend more time preparing. And, and the board could easily take a vote on that postponement, rescheduling, and all that. And, and I think that's a much more direct and, and open and, and under, clear, transparent way of dealing with that, as opposed to what seems to me, a, a simple abstention vote, which may or may not be interpreted as meaning that, or did it mean something else. So I appreciate your bringing that up. I've, I've, I've been in that situation where I'd like to see staff come back with more information, or even me personally, be ready to feel more comfortable with a, an up or down vote on that. So I support that, but I would, in fact, suggest that we feel empowered to say that, ask for a vote on, if, if a vote's necessary, I'm not even sure if a vote's necessary, I think the chair could even reset a new date for an item without a vote of the board, but the board certainly could vote on it if, if the chair so decided, in all the chair's power. And, and so I, I thank you for raising that. I think I also heard you say, though, that for a 13-member body, I think I heard you at least mentioning or proposing that maybe the threshold for passage of a matter should be a majority of those 13 seats. So a rock-solid seven votes to pass any item, which would be quite different from, right, what I think is the current rule, which is majority of those present and voting. I'm concerned by that idea, because I've, I've been part of this board for a few years, and I know that much of that time, or at least some of that time, not all 13 seats have been filled, and we don't control the appointing organizations or individuals, so we can't guarantee that they'll be filled. I've also witnessed that many of the members of this board have other parts of their lives that sometimes take precedence, so they're not always able to be at all of our board meetings. So I would be worried about a, a, a specific requirement for seven votes to pass any, everything, as being an obstacle to actually moving forward the matters of this organization. And I would, I, I personally would support a majority of those voting and present, with the hopes that if people are clear on if they want to see something set to a different date, they don't rather just abstain from the vote, but they rather propose a vote to do exactly that, so that we, hopefully, all the time, vote when we're all comfortable, ready to make an up or down yea, yea or nay decision on a matter, and then we can have at least the full engagement of the folks that are here. So that, I just wanted to add that, but thank you for your comments. I very much appreciate it.
Thank you, may I?
Sure.
If, if you don't mind, I, I really appreciate that very much, Trustee Cisneros. Here's what I want to, here's what I would like to avoid, and then I'm going to make a suggestion for some flexibility on my part. What I'm trying to avoid is a situation where you have seven people present at the meeting, you don't have, you know, no abstentions, let's say that that goes through, and you have a four to three vote. I, I have a hard time feeling that those four represent the will of the body, okay? That's what I'm trying to avoid. What, what I could be more flexible with is a majority of the filled seats. That's another way of looking at it. That would then say that if we were at 11, it would be six, for instance, okay? But that, I, you know, so I, I'm certainly willing to consider moving from the, you know, you know, the, you know, hard number of seven, which I understand your concern about that. It's, it's a, it's a real legitimate concern. I just want to be able to figure out a way that four doesn't become the minimum number. That's what I'm trying to avoid.
Thank you, trustees. Remembering that we have folks on the screen and on the telephone, let me just make sure to open the floor up to any of you who would like to participate in the discussion. I'm looking up at the screen. Trustee Sewell.
No, Mr. Chair, I think you probably should call on Sean first, because I, I'm, I may take the discussion in a slightly different direction.
Okay. I, I didn't see Trustee Selig's hand, but Sean, please.
Sure. So, well, I appreciate the discussion. I think it might be helpful to actually have some specific motions to discuss, because we're discussing various proposals, and it might be more focused to discuss each one. And I understand that the materials are sort of potentially too discreet proposals, but speaking specifically to the idea of requiring an absolute, an affirmative vote of a majority of the board to pass any motion, I, I just don't think that's wise. I can understand the reasoning behind it, and we did have that very unusual situation where a motion passed with a few votes, but that's quite rare. I do think the more common problem would be that if we adopt this requirement, we would find the board in a state of paralysis at times in its ability to manage the organization. And so to me, that's the, the bigger risk, and therefore, my view is the cure would be worse than the disease. So I, I wouldn't adopt that, that sort of voting regimen, but stick with a majority of those present and voting once a quorum is established.
Thank you, Trustee Selig. Trustee Sewell.
I may take the conversation in a slightly different direction, but I, I want to inject something that is, I would consider to be a relatively small matter, but I guess it looms large in this day and age of sort of Zoom and whatnot, and that is the issue of sort of technical difficulties. And, and this, this may not be apropos of, of this item, Mr. Chair, but given the fact that we're talking about voting and rules, I just, I thought I would bring it up, and if, if you'd like to read directly, please do so. But the issue I just want to raise is that, I think all of us, from time to time, have experienced technical difficulties and, and may have missed votes a, as a result of that. And for me, when that, when that's happened to me, I, I would have liked to have been recorded on, on an item, and it has turned out that, you know, we, we've just had to move on. And so the, the question, or at least what I would ask the body to sort of consider at some point in time, is, and, and this really is about technical difficulties, or issues with Zoom, would be the ability to add on. And maybe there'd be a time, you know, particularly if it does not affect the outcome of a vote, but, so that your vote could be recorded after the fact. And you were, you know, the only reason why you were not recorded is because something happened, you know, as it related to, to Zoom or whatnot. And for me, it's a matter of, I like to be on the record, and, and in those instances where that has happened to me, I, I felt sort of deprived of being able to, to express sort of my, my position on a matter.
Thank you, Trustee Sewell. You, you do raise an interesting, but a different issue, and so I agree that it probably merits some, some discussion and conversation, perhaps separately from this issue. So before we go there, it looks like Trustee Shelby would like to add to the conversation.
Let me first apologize, because I was not a part of the, I did not have the benefit of participating in this conversation when we were last together. And so I, I, I feel like I'm, I missed, I feel like I missed the, the substance of the conversation. So I'm sitting here, as much as I am excited about efficiency, because I have been in the land of Robert's Rules for a long time, through civic engagement and through political engagement, and I'm just wondering, in the course of the discussion, any just really cogent examples that can be provided as it relates to some of these pieces that we're talking about? And I, I just ask that from the standpoint in, in terms of, I see it kind of anecdotally being, being addressed, but like, I, you know, being a layperson, the clearer, the better for me. Because I'm also sitting here thinking, A, what is the timeline as it relates to making the transition? B, will there be any sort of online training that transpires? And C, how does this trickle down to the sub-entities that are a part of the State Bar as well? And so, you know, this, this just does not impact us, and, and I don't raise these like, like my colleague, Arnie, I don't raise these to take us into a totally different direction. But as I sit here and I think about the magnitude of the impact, those are the things that come to mind, you know, is there going to be an online training? Because we have an incredible portal where you can come up to speed with a number of the things at the State Bar, and maybe I'm a little, maybe I'm a little too far out there in terms of the conversation, but I just wanted to raise those points.
If, if I could ask Ms. Wilson or someone else on the staff to answer the last of Trustee Shelby's questions, which is, when the state, when the board makes, makes a change like this, does it trickle down to the sub-ends, committees and sub-entities?
Yes, it will. And that's, in fact, one of the motivations for this entire effort, is really a Trustee Cisneros and some others identifying the lack of consistency that currently exists. And that is a problem. So the decisions that the board makes will trickle down, that's the intention.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. So there's an answer to one of your questions. The question, the first one on the timeline, I'm interested to hear whether we have an answer to that, or is that something the board will be developing through this activity we're doing now?
Well, I think the answer is the same as the one provided on Rosenberg's. The decisions made around voting would be reflected in the Board Policy Manual. That would come back to you in September for adoption. And in terms of the training, there is the, the training module, and yes, it will be updated. The, all of the modules actually need to be updated, and it makes sense, I hadn't thought of it, but it makes sense that this module would be front-loaded, so we would deal with this one first.
Okay.
And last but not least, as it relates to the legislature, I imagine there has been a conversation, or I, I tend to find that everything we do comes under the purview of, of, you know, the legislature at some point in time. So I'm just curious if, I imagine conversations have transpired in terms of this item, but that was my last question.
I am unaware of any such conversations. I've not been a part of them.
I have not either.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, in developing the recommendations, excuse me for interrupting, in developing the recommendations, I did speak with one of the key parliamentarians with the legislature, and they, so they're aware that the State Bar is looking at rules of engagement and parliamentary procedure.
Thank you, Ms. Boomer. And, and if you don't mind, I, I would like to address this next question to you. I've been jotting I've been jotting down some of the conversation and the phrases and words that are sticking out to me, and we've been told that you are the expert and a good one indeed, so I'd like to ask you this question. Is there commonly accepted definition, understanding of what recusal is or means? Let me just start there.
So, it's a good question. When, I think I would refer you to your own rules of order that discuss recusals. Basically, it is you must recuse yourself due to a conflict of interest. And so, I have not, I don't have a good answer for that. I have not thought about that question.
No, I think that's a good place to start, and if I may, that is the understanding that I've traditionally had when it comes to recusal. For those who don't know, my day-to-day practice is as a lawyer for public agencies, and so I sit in city council meetings, I sit in board meetings of various public agencies, and a recusal is a very specific thing, it has a very specific legal meaning, under the Political Reform Act typically, but there could be other conflicts of interest laws that demand that a member of the body recuse themselves, meaning not participate, not only in the vote, but generally not participate in anything leading up to the vote, so as not to taint the decision with the conflict. And so, my understanding and the way that I treat this issue always is, you recuse when you must recuse, or sometimes you can recuse out of an abundance of caution. In other words, there's a question about whether there's a conflict or not, and so I'm not even going, I, being the member of the body, am not even going to subject myself or the agency, for that matter, to the question of whether there was anything improper. And so, that is definitely different, however, from an abstention, right? Because a recusal is either legally required or taken out of an abundance of caution due to a legal potential conflict. And again, in my practice, when a member of a body that I'm advising abstains, it's because they're choosing not to vote at that time. They're choosing not to be on the record with whatever the decision is, whatever the question is at hand. And quite frankly, in the day-to-day world, the consequence of doing that too many times is generally going to bear itself out in the political process, right? Either at the body or at the ballot box, because my clients are generally all elected. And so, that is how I distinguish those two things in my mind. I do not, in my practice, ever consider an abstention a soft no vote. I just consider it, it's as if that person were not there and not counted. Trustee Shelby, it looks like she has a question.
Please finish your comments, because I have a follow-up to that.
Okay. The other, you know, the other phrase that I jotted down, I think based on Trustee Tony's commentary, was the will of the body. And I, again, I can understand the desire to have that well-defined and to mean something. I don't know that I agree that it needs to be always a majority of the body. And the reason for that is, the reasons for that, at least from my perspective, relate to some of the discussion earlier, which is, sometimes folks just can't be here, sometimes folks choose not to be here, but for those folks who are here and are, you know, putting in the time to read the report and engage in the discussion, I am less inclined to deprive them of the ability to vote and act, because they came, they came, right? They showed up, and win or lose, they expressed a vote. And that's sort of where I fall on that one. Okay, that's all I had at this time.
I, it was very interesting, Mr. Chair. You made the comment about abstention, and one of the things I was noting is the beauty of this body is we come with so many different experiences, you as a person who advises elected officials, and me as a person who works from the position of influencing. So, I absolutely do see an abstention. Oftentimes, in my experience, I see an abstention as a soft no, because it's not the ability of anybody to make a decision, but they may be, from the standpoint of trying to send a message or trying to show that they want to support, but they can't get the votes. And so, I see an abstention as a very powerful tool, as it relates, in most cases, I see it as an extremely powerful tool.
Yeah, I don't disagree, especially in the legislative context.
Yeah, I would just respond to, thank you, Trustee Shelby. I think we've all seen that, but again, I think I see that more in a legislative role than an operational role. We are an operational body. We are not seeking votes, we are not playing politics, we are trying to get the business of the State Bar done, and I don't see that being a useful tool in a body that's trying to get things done. I see it as a tool that's useful and oftentimes utilized in a political legislative body that's revoting and revoting and rediscussing and lobbying and politicking and all that kind of stuff, and going back and going back and not wanting to piss off the people they're trying to convince, and on and on and on, but they don't have to meet a budget, they don't have to pay the bills, they are doing a very different activity. That's just my thought on that. Thank you.
No, I appreciate that. And to that, and I would ask, where are we on this issue? I feel like we've had such, we've had such robust conversation. In terms of this particular item, item B, we need to come to resolution as it relates to the proposal and the recommendations that have been identified?
Agreed. And Ms. Wilson and I were just having a sidebar. Ms. Adapretian has some options perhaps for us to consider. It may help us bring this piece of the conversation to a resolution, and I would suggest that if it doesn't within 10 or 15 minutes, then we continue the conversation tomorrow.
Chair.
Of course, that everyone here, yes.
Chair Duran, I had my.
Yes. Oh, there's your hammer.
So, I just have a very, I just have a nagging question from a layperson, and probably edification for other members of the public, too. Can you tell me about proxy voting? If we were to consider the whole body, you know, the will of the body and all, can you tell me about proxy voting?
I will.
If it doesn't apply.
Sure. I will offer my observation, and that is that it is disfavored generally. We're not a, this is not a corporate setting, and essentially, I think it relates to the, what I said earlier, is if you care, you show up, and you are, and I can tell you that under the Brown Act, which applies to local legislative bodies, proxy voting is not allowed. So, Mr. Tony.
Yes, if I may add on to that, the California Secretary of State, when it comes to the rules for nonprofit organizations, prohibits proxy voting. I know that not everybody follows that, because I've been on boards that will have it. If you look at the Secretary of State's website, it explicitly prohibits proxy voting for nonprofit corporations in California.
And I guess the observation that I'll add, in addition to the nonprofit world, is we are a public body, and our votes must occur in full view of the public, of course, when we're in, except for when we're in closed session. So, I think the proxy voting would, you know, would be antithetical to that.
Mr. Chair, if I could just comment for a quick moment.
Sure.
So, just to summarize where we are, currently, the State Bar voting method is based on the number of members present in voting, and it allows abstentions. The proposal is to change to a majority of the members of the board, either taking into account the number of seats filled, or the, taking into account the number of, the total number of the State Bar. So, either 13 or less. The impact of an abstention vote under present and voting means that an abstention vote does not count in the vote. If you change to a majority of the members of the board, taking, of the board, then actually how you deal with abstentions changes. It essentially becomes a no vote, because you are required to have, out of 13, let's say you need seven yeses. And so, any abstention isn't a yes, and a member may choose to abstain because they are not ready to vote, or it may be a soft no, and it may not be their intention to vote against it, but that is the effective impact that an abstention would have if the vote procedure is based on a majority of the body.
Thank you, Ms. Boomer. That was helpful, especially in conjunction with what's up on the screen. And so, I'm going to state what I think to be the status quo and then ask for a motion. I understand it to be the status quo, that item three up there is currently the system under which we operate, meaning we have to have a quorum, obviously, and it requires a majority of those present and voting in the affirmative to pass an item. An abstention is not considered a vote, and so, it would be, that's the way that we've done it, status quo, we would not require any board action to change that. If there's a member of the board who would like to change that, please offer a motion. We'll see if it gets a second, and then we can debate that. Please, Mr. Tony.
I would like to move adoption of door number two, the majority of members of the board taking into account the number of seats filled.
Okay. Is there a second on that motion? There's no second in the room. Let me just double-check those on the phone or on the video. Hearing none, the motion dies for lack of a second. Is there a different motion from a member of the board?
Your Honor, this is, or Your Honor. Mr. Chair, this is, sorry, force I have it.
Thank you, sir.
It's a white suit, it reminded me of Andy Griffith, you know, I just had to, anyway. All right, this is Stallings, I would move door number three.
So, there's no need for a motion on that, Mr. Stallings? That is a status quo.
And actually, it would be helpful, excuse the interruption, it would be helpful to have a motion on that, because we do, right now, your policy manual is silent.
Okay, I apologize, I didn't realize that piece of it. Okay, so, ignore everything I said initially. There's a motion for item number three, door number three. Is there a second on that motion?
Your Honor, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Cisneros. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, may we have a vote? Point of order, can you read the motion, please? Yes, of course, thank you, Mr. Sewell. Sorry about that. This would be that a majority of those present and voting once a quorum has been established is what's required to pass a motion.
And just from a clarity standpoint, present and voting means in-person and or online, correct?
Correct.
Do we want to make any changes to abstentions? Not we, you.
So, my understanding is this number three includes that, are you talking about memorializing that? An abstention is not a vote, is my understanding of what this motion means. I see a lot of nodding heads. An abstention is not a vote. It's not, it's neither, neither a yes nor a no. Does the board want to see that in writing? We can friendly amendment that?
That is what it means.
That's what it means, exactly. Okay, all right, so the motion for door number three is on the table, as clarified by Trustee Shelby, those present remotely or in person. Thank you for that. Seeing no discussion, may we have a vote?
Braden? Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Aye.
De La Cruz? Delan?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Sewell?
Yes.
Shelby?
Aye.
So?
Aye.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Nay.
Thank you, trustees, that was a very invigorating conversation. I geeked out a little bit, too. Okay, so we have one other item on this?
We have two. I'm going to suggest maybe we take it tomorrow.
That works for me.
And I would, I would like, because I see Elizabeth has been sitting here patiently with us all afternoon, so I'd love for Luisa to just briefly introduce her.
Yes, I'd like to introduce it to Elizabeth Isus Kisa. I had to ask her how to pronounce that last name earlier today. She is a paralegal in the Office of Chief Trial Counsel and recently joined the Office of the Executive Director as a program analyst, as part of the Training and Development Program that we offer at the State Bar. So, she is going to be with us and has been helping with board support and preparing for board meetings, so we're excited to have her on board.
Thank you for the introduction. I'm really excited to be here.
Wonderful. Welcome to the new, to the new role. Isus Kisa?
Isus Kisa.
Isu Kisa, I was close.
And the Training and Development Program is something we introduced a few years ago, and it provides staff like Elizabeth with the opportunity to try out new roles, and often they are roles in not sort of a higher classification than they're in, gain some experience, see if they like it, and help them gain eligibility for promotion. So, we're excited to have her.
Wonderful. Anybody want to offer anything?
Welcome. I've been sitting here staring at you all day, saying how rude that I haven't gone over to introduce myself, so welcome, it's a pleasure to have you.
Okay, on that very happy note, we are recessed until tomorrow morning, 9:00 AM? 9:00 AM. Everyone have a nice evening. Thank you.